Here.
Commissioner Irwin?
Here.
Commissioner Kingsworthy?
Here.
Commissioner Leish?
Here.
Commissioner Ortman?
Here.
First item on our agenda is elections. As you'll recall, elections don't require a motion or a second. You can nominate anyone or yourself for our offices of chair or vice chair secretary. The suggested format for that is provided on the PowerPoint. Nominations will vote, be voted on in the order that they are received. And the first nominee to get a majority, which would be four votes, will be elected to that office. We'll start with nominations for chair.
I nominate Commissioner Honig for chair.
Got a nomination for Commissioner Honig. Any other nominations for chair? Any other nominations for chair?
I would nominate Commissioner Friedrich.
All right, got a nomination for Commissioner Friedrich, a nomination for Commissioner Honig. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of Commissioner Honig for chair, please say aye.
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 All right, that was a majority, so congratulations, Madam Chair. I'll turn the meeting over to you for the election of our vice chair secretary.
Thank you. Are there any nominations for vice chair?
I nominate Chair, or Chair, I nominate Commissioner Ortman for vice chair.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of Commissioner Ortman as vice chair?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Commissioner Ortman's elected as vice chair and next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for January, the January 6 regular meeting. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I did have a correction to make on the minutes. So under section five, the zoning board of appeals report, the second paragraph, third line being that allow the applicant, allow should be stricken.
Do we need to amend the motion to approve the minutes to incorporate the correction?
As long as the person who moved in second will entertain as a friendly amendment, you can move forward with the vote as amended.
I accept the amendment.
I accept the amendment as the person who seconded it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the zoning board of appeals report, Commissioner Friedrich.
Madam Chair, we did meet to approve the meeting schedule for 2023. No cases.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is communications. Mr. Kane?
Madam Chair, no communications this evening.
Thank you. And next item on the agenda is TC 2201. Mr. Kane?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Your first and only public hearing this evening is a text change that would amend the definition of band sign within the band sign section of the code. This would modify the standard so that there's more flexibility in the placement of a band sign on the front of a building. Band sign is typically the, I would say, the most common and most popular type of signage that's utilized under our code for businesses because it's wall-fronting signage on, that's placed on the building. And so it's very common around the community, downtown, Mission Street, and elsewhere. So this would just extend the opportunity for that band sign to be placed not just on the facade of a building, which would be on the front, but also on the sides or rear. And it would also extend the opportunity for that band sign to be placed other places on the facade in elevation other than directly above the main entrance. So just some additional flexibility for that very popular sign type. This is in response to a suggestion from the city commission last summer that the planning commission review a couple items from the sign code. And so this came out of that work session for your consideration. The other thing this ordinance would do is delete a reference to the downtown Mount Pleasant sign guidelines, which was a document that was created back in 2016, prior to the adoption of the current zoning ordinance. Most of the recommendations of that design guidelines document ended up getting folded into the sign standards in the code. And so it's just redundant. And so we're recommending stripping that out of the sign code with this ordinance. And so staff's recommendation is that the planning commission recommend that the city commission adopt the text change.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Any questions for Mr. Kane? And I would like to open up public comment. I don't see anyone here in person, but are there any members of the public that are online that want to comment?
We do not have anybody on the Zoom and we do not have any electronic communications.
Thank you. I will close public comment and open up discussion.
Move to adopt text change 2201.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I just wanted to clarify, Madam Chair, that your motion should be to recommend the city commission adopt the text change.
Okay.
Okay. Move to recommend that the city commission adopt the text change 2201.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is public comment. If there's anyone from the public that would like to comment, this is your last opportunity to do so. Is there anyone online that wants to comment?
Madam Chair, there is no one on the Zoom and we have no electronic communications at this time.
Thank you. I will close public comment and move on to news, new business. Discuss and consider an extension of SUP 2102 and SPR 2102. Mr. Kane?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The applicant for this case, which came before the planning commission in February of 2021, has requested a one-year extension for the project. This was a proposal to demolish an existing rooming dwelling at 1,005 Douglas and replace it with a new three-unit rooming dwelling at the same location. Under the zoning ordinance, an applicant has one year from the time of approval to obtain a building permit in order to proceed with the project. That building permit hasn't been applied for yet. And so under the zoning code, both for site plans and specialty use permits, the planning commission has the ability to grant an extension of up to one year. And there are no code changes under the zoning code that would apply to this project that would otherwise prevent its approval today as it was previously approved. And so staff is recommending that you consider granting that one-year extension for 2102 SUP and SPR.
Thank you, Mr. Kane.
Recording in progress.
Any questions for Mr. Kane?
Mr. Kane, did Mr. McGurk give you a reason why they haven't applied for permit yet?
No, I actually reached out because we hadn't received the permanent application just to inquire if there was a desire for an extension and he indicated there was. And so, okay, proceeded from there.
Any other questions for Mr. Kane?
Would the extension date from the time of your previous approval? Or is it date from the time when we extended?
It would be 12 months from the expiration of the current approval. So it would extend it out another 12 months. Or up to 12 months depending on the planning commission's motion.
Any other questions for Mr. Kane? I will open up discussion.
Move to grant a one-year extension of SCP 2102 and SPR 2102.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is discuss amendment to Article 7 of the zoning ordinance to update the definition of liquor store and consider setting a public hearing on this issue for the March 3, 2022, regular meeting. Mr. Kane?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next item, staff was doing a review of liquor licenses that are issued within the city of Mount Pleasant. And we discovered that the manner in which the city's zoning code defines a liquor store, which is a definition that's been on the books since 1984, is inconsistent with practice and that SDD, which is specially designated distributor and SDM, specially designated merchants license types, under our zoning ordinance, result in a definition of that business as a liquor store unless it's a full-service grocery or pharmacy. And so we have a number of businesses within the community, primarily class one restaurants, but also hotels that carry an SDD or an SDM license, although they don't have approval from the planning commission to operate as a liquor store. In staff's view, those businesses are pretty clearly not liquor stores. And that was not the intent of the definition to capture every other business type in the community as a liquor store. And so in order to bring that definition into compliance and consistency with practice and with the existing ground conditions within the community, staff's recommending that the definition of liquor stores be amended to provide a broader coverage of, in terms of excluding certain business types from being classified as liquor stores. And so that draft ordinance is before you tonight. Staff's looking for any feedback you might have and otherwise requesting that you set a public hearing on the text change at your next regular meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Any questions for Mr. Kane?
I have a question for Mr. Kane. So are gas stations and convenience stores considered liquor stores or is it a different kind of license that they get?
They are considered liquor stores. And that's a good question. I think that I would, for two reasons, I didn't include them in the proposed amendment. One, the gas stations are all already approved as liquor stores due to recent action by the planning commission with their addition of beer and wine sales or liquor sales. And two, because of the nature of those businesses where it's a small footprint convenience store, I think that's much more likely to operationally be similar to a liquor store than, for instance, a hotel that might have packaged beer for sale for guests out of, you know, guest service area.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Kane? I'll open up discussion.
I've moved to set a public hearing to consider the proposed text change at the March 3, 2022 regular meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is discuss amendment to sections 154, 103, 154, 613, and 154, 615 of the zoning ordinance regarding the types of improvements and applications requiring site plan review and approval and consider setting a public hearing on this issue for the March 3, 2022, regular meeting. Mr. Kane?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is another item that was discussed in work session by the planning commission back in October. The purpose of this amendment is to create sort of a de minimis site plan threshold that doesn't currently exist within the zoning ordinance and hasn't existed, at least going back to the adoption of the 1984 zoning ordinance, currently for any use other than a single-family dwelling. Any change to the site, whether it's a change in the landscaping plan, a square foot increase of the building, any other site disturbance whatsoever, triggers a site plan review process. And if that use is a special use, it triggers a special use permit, public hearing, as well as a site plan review. And so in staff's opinion, that puts a pretty steep burden on property owners for making modest improvements and in many cases can discourage those modest improvements from taking place. So just as an example, you know, perhaps enclosing an existing dumpster in a dumpster enclosure, bringing things more into compliance with the desires of the city as implemented through the zoning ordinance could trigger a specialty use permit, public hearing, and a site plan review and, you know, $1,050 fee in a public process and bringing other site elements into compliance with the code when I think that that probably is not really in the best interest of the property owner or the city to put them through that extensive process. And so this would create that, a minor site plan review process, which would allow for those minor changes to take place through an administrative process. So this, I will admit, is a little confusing in the sense that we have an administrative site plan review process that would still exist, that would still be there for larger-scale projects that are still qualified under that resolution by the planning commission. This would be for much smaller scale items that would nevertheless have required a full site plan review or potentially a public hearing for those type of improvements to take place. And so there's a full list here. We've done a, we've tried to align this proposal with other ordinance thresholds. So for instance, aligning the footprint of buildings to the stormwater ordinance and where stormwater permitting becomes required so that there's some consistency in where those thresholds fall. But essentially allowing for modest changes in the footprint of a building to go through a minor site plan review process, allowing accessory buildings or structures under 200 square foot of change, whether that's a new 200 square foot building or less, or a change to the footprint of an existing building that's less than 200 square feet, minor reconstructions of parking areas where there's changes to the striping or layout, so being distinguished from parking areas where there's no change, alterations to an existing parking area including striping or driveways, those are items that currently trigger site plan review, the full-blown process. So for ADA purposes in particular, I think that would be meaningful to be able to do that as a minor plan review. Landscaping items and then installation and modification or removal of outdoor dining areas, bike parking, private sidewalks, cross accesses, dumpster enclosures, mechanical equipment, electric car charging stations, or other minor site elements as determined by staff. And again, these are all items that we've talked about either specific to this amendment or in other work sessions recently and looking for ways to streamline the review and approval process so that we can encourage these things. And I think, I believe this would ensure that that takes place. This would also make it clear that certain other additional changes, so things, currently the only thing exempt from site plan review is single-family residential development. This would make it clear that reconstruction of existing parking areas under 2,600 square feet, which is the stormwater ordinance threshold, if there's not a change to the striping or layout, doesn't require any review from planning. It would also ensure that if somebody wants to make a landscaping change to their site, it's not regulated landscaping, that it's clear that that also doesn't require a site plan review. So if they have a non-regulated tree they want to remove, if they want to plant a tree, the way the code is written right now, that triggers a site plan review process. So this makes it clear that that's not required in those instances. The section three basically provides that out for a special use to also qualify for minor site plan review. So I just want to be clear, for the type of improvements outlined, in part two of section two, they would qualify for this new minor site plan review process. If it's a special use that's existing and approved by the planning commission, a minor site plan would be possible without going through a public hearing process. So as an example, if somebody wanted to add an accessory structure of 200 square foot or less to a special use and that special use already has special use permit approval, that would not have to come back to the planning commission. If somebody wanted to establish a new special use, that's still going to have to come before the planning commission to get approval. So I think, I think that because we have a lot of special uses that come through our processes, student housing-oriented, auto-oriented uses, I think that really opens a lot of new opportunity for administrative review and streamlining things for the public. So I would welcome any questions. I appreciate the planning commission's patience. This is a complicated amendment, which is why staff wanted to take a few months to work on it and try to get it right and get a lot of staff eyes on it before we brought it back. And if the planning commission's comfortable with it as proposed, staff's recommendation and request tonight is to set a public hearing at your March meeting. Madam Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Any questions for Mr. Kane?
I again have a question for Mr. Kane. Sorry. I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. So the amendments that you want to make, these entities would still need to go through administrative review, they just would not have to come before this body. Is that correct?
The new, the minor site plan review process would be a step lower than administrative site plan review.
Okay.
So if someone goes through administrative site plan review, they're going through the full review process for the entire site, all site elements that are not in compliance with today's code are brought into compliance with today's code at the, at the administrative site plan review fee. The minor site plan review process would be an even more expedited, lower cost, hopefully. We, we'd have to, we'll ultimately have to propose a fee if this is adopted, but the intent would be that this is a, essentially if, if the property in question was proposing to install bike parking, we would only be looking for a plan spec for that bike parking and its location on the site, not full-blown drawings for the property.
Okay.
And if the bike parking meets code and its location and otherwise, then we would approve it. So it's more of like an over-the-counter type review as opposed to being a more involved site plan review. So just trying to create that kind of de minimis level that we've never had to say, you know, if you wanted, if you're going to do something minor, we're going to treat it as such. We're not going to impose thousands of dollars of other improvements because you want to make one improvement that is something we're trying to encourage.
Hmm, okay.
Ultimately, because of that, I think we will, I will probably, if approved, come back to the planning commission with an updated administrative review resolution that reflects the addition of the minor site plan review process to make it clear that this fits within that.
I think I got it.
So think of it, think of it this way, we have site plan review with all the standards of site plan review and everything that has to be included on the site plan and very clearly articulated processes, we will have this minor site plan review, which will be like a significantly streamlined version of regular site plan review that still is conducted administratively, is only conducted administratively, but we'll just provide that, that outlet for those improvements to be made to an existing property.
So for the applicant, this is a process that'll be both less expensive and quicker for them, is the goal?
It'll definitely be less expensive. We do administrative site plan review really quick. Usually we're, we, we guarantee five business days. We usually turn those around in less.
Okay.
So I would hope that many of these could maybe even be same-day approvals, but I would probably still promise no more than five business day, just so we have time. If, if even a small improvement can be complicated, if there's utility impacts, if we need to circulate it to multiple reviewers. But I think in most cases, we'd be able to process these very quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Kane? I'll open up discussion.
I've moved to set a public hearing to consider the proposed text change at, at the March 3, 2020, regular meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I would just like to take a moment to commend Mr. Kane and the staff for the work they did in this project, which is your job, but it seems like good work and we appreciate that. And questions for Mr. Friedrich as well. I don't know if that's something for the record, but we appreciate it.
Thanks.
Well done.
It's, it's been needed. It's, it's, it's not, it's frustrating as staff to have that lack of de minimis standard. And so I'm glad that we're on the road towards establishing that lower threshold review
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is recommend a planning commission representative to the zoning board Would anyone like to nominate a representative?
I'd like to recommend Commissioner Friedrich.
Any other nominations? All those in favor of recommending Commissioner Friedrich to the, to be the representative to the zoning board of appeals?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes. And next item on the agenda is staff report.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. And would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn to work session?
Move to adjourn to the work session?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing adjourned to work session, does anyone need a break before we start the work session?
I do have a question. Are we going to pack into a conference room or are we just going to stay right here spread out?
We're gonna stay here. We gotta be on camera, so that's part of it, but we'll stay right here.
And this should be? We have to be on camera for work session?
Yep.
When did that start?
Hmm, 2017-ish, we started recording, so.
Oh, they just bring the cameras in.
Yeah, for right now, we're gonna be, we're gonna do it out here. Hopefully someday.
It's been two years since we've been in a conference room. I forgot about that.
I know, it looks different. You can go back, I'll, I'll show you. It's actually reconfigured, but hopefully soon we'll all be up there again and then we'll be able to also do that. But anyway, so tonight's work session, as we did last year, staff's brought forward some items for your consideration for your 2022 work plan. This will just give me a heads up on what items you might wish to discuss in your regular meetings or in work sessions during the year so that I can begin preparations and see what your priorities are. The list below is largely composed of items that were discussed at this time last year. There were items, there were certain items that the planning commission prioritized for discussion in 2021 but ultimately didn't discuss, and those are marked with an asterisk and they're also located at the top of the list. I'm essentially just looking for general direction on what items on this list you may or may not be interested in discussing so that I can put together a draft work session schedule to bring back to you in March.
Any thoughts, anybody?
I like the idea of the three with the asterisk and then it, towards the bottom, that's only hasn't been a point of emphasis that I can recall in recent times, but e-commerce fulfillment centers, I think it's those kinds of things that we don't necessarily think of on a regular basis as long as the packages get delivered correctly, but those have to, have to happen, you know, somewhere and then there might be different business models as the, you know, e-commerce evolves where there might be smaller distribution centers located within city limits in ways we can't currently foresee early in 22, but it might be an issue in 24 or 25, who knows? And so I think seeing where the future of retail and online shopping is going, it might be good to, you know, just proactively, you know, put that into, you know, a work session.
And there was an article in a recent, I think it was the Michigan Planning Magazine about e-commerce impacts and with the discussion on GoPuff last year in particular, I thought it was timely to discuss how the code responds to that emerging land use.
Yeah, I suppose with the GoPuff thing, it starts blurring the line between, you know, how much is retail versus just basically an e-commerce platform. So I think that'd be a good discussion to have in a future work session.
Jacob, for home occupation standards, were you thinking just reviewing the list or?
Yeah, that's actually an item that's called out in the master plan. And so if that was something you wanted to discuss, I would likely just bring forward the current text and see if there's any adjustments that you wish to make. Generally speaking, the city's home occupation standards are fairly liberal compared to most communities and they're essentially the same occupation, home occupation standards we've had going back to 1984. So I don't think there's a pressing urgency to necessarily loosen the rules. There's some communities that have very strict home occupation rules that are probably out of step with today's work-from-home type world. But nevertheless, given the change in the way people work and do business, it, it also would be timely, like e-commerce centers, to be thinking about that in the near term.
Yeah, I think I might be interested in looking at that one, too.
I would say from our last meeting, I know we did a special use permit for a daycare and I know a couple people had spoken and saying that our area is like very low when it comes to daycare and home, home care centers. So I do think that some important that we should look at, just for future meetings,
Jacob, I have a question. Do we, did we have anything that came up when we were looking at the, um, the master plan that were buffer standards that we were looking at moving to versus what we currently use?
For the, for the CD3, L and CD3, that, I, that objective, I believe, just came out of general public feedback about neighborhood impact of adjacent businesses. I know that it's been a, I think historically it's been more sensitive than average in Mount Pleasant because of the configuration of the Mission Street corridor. Just there's not a lot of land space between adjacent residences and high-impact business types. And so getting those buffers right is important and not always easy under those limits.
And so, getting those buffers right is important and not always easy under those limitations. And so, I think this was simply an opportunity to review and see if those were still appropriate or if there was any need for there to be any change to the way in which we implement those buffers.
Can you tell me a little bit about like the registered student organization dwelling locations and all that? Like what would that entail?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So registered student organization dwellings are very limited in terms of the geography in which they can locate within the city. And we have a number of registered student organization dwellings that are located primarily north of High Street on Main, Washington or University that have been non-conforming. They were created in a period between nineteen seventy-one and nineteen eighty-four when the city allowed them in that area. And then since nineteen eighty-four, they've been non-conforming. And so, there's been an ongoing dialogue about whether or not that non-conforming status is appropriate. I receive a lot of inquiries. Every year, I receive at least a couple inquiries from registered student organization groups that are looking for new housing opportunities. And there's just not a tremendous amount of availability for new housing opportunities in the area in which they're allowed to be located. And so, that, that creates a challenge for them. It's partly, I will say, it's partly self-imposed because, and understandably, they want to be near other Greek organizations. These are primarily Greek organizations. They want to be near each other. And so, they kind of self-limit where they're willing to locate. And then we also have a geographic limitation imposed. And so, this was just simply an opportunity to talk about those regulations and see if there might be some options to work through that. I've had conversations with the Greek Life office at CMU multiple times over the past few years to try to solicit their interest in being part of that conversation. One of the challenges with this is that that office has a lot of turnover and organizations themselves, obviously, the students turn over every couple of years. And so, we're kind of always working with a new group of people. But I think it's one that would be important in light of enrollment, being supportive of those student organizations and encouraging them seems to be something the university is supportive of. So that's kind of where that was oriented towards.
Okay, thank you.
Without, without pretending to understand completely what the floating overlay district point is there. And nevertheless, from what I know about it, seems to be supportive of easier business establishment here in the city. And this is with regards to the recent press from Mr. Angler and, and our old, old friend Mike about the need to attract businesses here. So I, to the extent that that one might make it easier for businesses to reestablish or to relocate here, to locate here, I would, I would think that's probably smart for us to look at.
Any other thoughts? Hearing none, I guess we can.
I think we're at eight and we probably won't have eight work sessions this year. We usually don't in December. Next month, we'll likely be discussing a referral from the City Commission about drive-through restaurant stacking. And so, I will look at, I will work through this list and put together a tentative schedule for your consideration in March. And we will move forward from there.
Jacob, are we definitely getting that from the City Commission about this drive-through stacking?
I'm sorry, definitely what?
Is that coming through next month, definitely, or?
They are, they made the referral at their last meeting.
They did.
To, for it to be discussed at your March meeting. So, yep, that'll be, that will be on your agenda for next month, for discussion only.
On the regular agenda or work session?
Probably work session agenda. The only action that's being requested is for the Planning Commission to identify options. So I think we can handle that through a general feedback provided through a work session format. Unless the Planning Commission would prefer that it be on the regular agenda. But ultimately, the only action you could take would be to discuss the item.
And yeah, that sounds like a work session type item then. Any further discussion? Anyone like to move to adjourn the meeting?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.